Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me? All right. I appreciate everybody being here. This is the Antioch County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting for December the 30th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And very, very short agenda. We've got one thing that we need to discuss with the public today. And do I hear approval of the agenda? Now, Clark, you've got two choices. Second, hold on, does the favor say aye?
Yeah.
No, opposed. The purpose of the meeting today is Project Gator, which is, we have to have a public hearing. As everyone knows, we have a certified industrial site, the Orde Brown property, just on the west end of town. And that's going to be the topic of what's going on because we do have an industry wanting to come in here and they are highly interested in that particular spot. So I'll turn it over to our county manager, Ms. Lynn Austin. She will explain a little bit more about, hopefully, what we can get done with that company. Go ahead, Lynn.
So, we're still under a nondisclosure agreement with our client. And we're calling it Project Gator, because they're interested in the Orde Brown property. This would create, they do want the whole eighty-four and a half acres. They're going to use the whole thing for their business use. I'm getting glasses on here. We have $2,671,900 invested into that parcel of land. This company has agreed to invest at least $150 million, up to possibly $175 million, into this parcel. And their build-out and roadways, entrances, that kind of thing. It is attractive to them because we, and I think Bill Slavel that's here too, would say because it's a certified site. So that work that we've done prior to today, in getting that site certified by the state, that has sure paid off for us. It would create 150 new jobs in that area. So their level of investment is not including the amount of jobs and what that is impactful to our community, through economic, just economic impact to us, which would be a good thing, to create more, more jobs and better-paying jobs and that kind of thing. The jobs that they had told us will at least be around 42,000, up to 75,000 plus. And some of it's based on commissions, so that would be even more potential, up to six figures, possibly. So that's kind of what we know on the level of investment on the jobs. If we look at what, you know, they're wanting the land, and we have 2.6, say 2.7 invested in it, roughly the first year that they would build out in 2025, they would invest $75,000, or $75 million, excuse me. And that would be $309,000 in tax revenue in 2025. And then it would go up each year for the second, third year. Leveling out on that third year of $175 million of investment, which would be $910,000 of tax value. So over 10 years, the county would expect to get around $8.3, $8,320,000, which well exceeds the value of the land that we have invested the Duck County dollars in. And that's not even including the value of 150 jobs to our community and our citizens. So I would ask from the commissioners to move forward with the project based on what we can tell at this time, and grant the land, based on, we have to do a little bit more due diligence on their part, but based on everything checking out, and we have seen no reason why it wouldn't, based on all that due diligence checking out, to take into consideration giving this land to the company in value of the insanity, as their insanity plan, and encouraging jobs to come here, so.
So, just for public, so everybody will understand and know exactly what's involved here, it's not that we're going to just hand over a piece of property to somebody that we don't know. There are due diligence on their side as well as our side. And the way that this is going to work, there will be a stipulation, our county attorney will be correct me if I am wrong, that we will put into that if they do not meet the expectations that they have claimed to do, if they do not get to keep the property, it still will retain, be retained for Yancey County.
It would revert back to the county.
It comes back to the county. It's not like we're just giving them, it doesn't work that way. So just, just to be clear on that.
We're always make sure, that's what we have done, we've always make sure that we cover our bases and it'll benefit something were to happen. So just, you know, we feel pretty secure about it, don't see any reason why, but we do vet them and do our due diligence. That's one other thing I was going to add on, and it slipped my mind. Donnie, am I missing something that you would like to add?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, the process that we're going through right now is all a legal statutory process. The notices that we had to give at this meeting are all set forth in North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, which is Economic Development Appropriations by County Government. And in that process, what you're having right now is the public hearing portion of, before the county can appropriate any monies toward economic development, you're required to give notice of a public hearing. We ran the notice in the newspaper, as we were required to do. We had run that notice 10 days before this meeting. We had given notice that we were going to have a public meeting, which is required to be done 48 hours before the meeting occurs. So that's the reason we're here. The appropriation that you're considering is not a monetary appropriation. In the past, we have given out money for various economic developments, whether that's been in building and use growing up, whether it's been a tax incentive, we did it. For Altech, we did both. When Altech came here in 2006, we gave Altech the land on which they constructed their building, out on Canyon River School Road. We also give them a tax incentive for the jobs that they created. So they receive two types of economic development. What you're proposing here is to give them a tract of land that you have as a certified site. We have valued that land at $2.671 million, which is what Lynn was trying to state, is that under that statute, we have to be able to recoup that investment over at most a 10-year period of time. We did not even have to value the jobs that were to be created here. We could simply use the tax revenues, which once paid would more than, I think, four times pay for the land that's there. So you would, you would meet the statutory requirements in order to give a land to them. As Lynn also said, under that same statute, if for some reason the company fails to perform either in the form of jobs, or either in the form of their investment in Yancey County, then there will be provisions where they will be penalized in the agreement. And there will also be provisions that we can, the word is clawback, the land from them. So, and we will, we will put all of this in the form of what is called an economic incentive agreement, that if we can come to terms, and they do want to come, all of that will be set forth in an agreement. This public hearing is only for the purpose of determining whether or not you want to take that still to appropriate that money in the event that they do want to proceed with us. So, unless there's any questions, you can proceed to the public hearing. Any questions, we don't, so can we write to the public? And we all agree with, we talked about this in close session. We want to talk about this more in close session and make that decision. So, at this time, we're...
Could y'all speak to environmental impact?
Yes. You what, I'm sorry?
Speak to environmental impact, please.
Okay. And when we are at liberty to indulge a little bit more about what this company is, we will address that, that I can assure you of. I'm sorry, we will address that, yes. Probably not at this meeting until we have the freedom from, when we get released from that company, to let the public know what it is. We will address that.
Can you tell us what kind of green, can you tell us what kind of company?
We're going to open up public hearing, we'll take some, some questions, and we'll get to that.
I will say this, though, just be mindful, when we look into a project or something, we think, does it fit well in our area? Is it going to be good neighbors, good stewards of the land, stuff like that? So, if we didn't think it was going to be pretty darn good, we realize there's a housing development beside it, we realize there's a church on the other side, and, you know, we feel like it's a good fit, or we wouldn't indulge in it at all. So, just, just know that. Environmental impact should be little to none.
As a matter of fact, without indulging too much, because we did sign a disclosure to make sure that this, to protect this company, that we can't speak fully about it yet. But they are willing to come out after we do some due diligence here with the process by the general statute, that they're fixing to come out real soon if we can work out a deal with them, I'll let everybody know. But I probably will be safe in saying that everybody in the room is going to be happy with what it is. I feel safer. So, with that being, with that being said, we're going to open up the public hearing. So do I hear a motion that we go into public hearing? A motion, go ahead, say it. All right. Hold on, does the favor say aye?
Aye.
Our public hearing is open. Now, the way we're going to do this, normally in public hearing, we don't do the public comments signup. There are four that have signed up, but we're going to be able to take their questions from the floor. And this is not like our normal public comments that we have at the commissioners meeting. By general statute, we can't respond. This is going to be a dialogue here. Now, there are four people that have signed up, and we are here to talk about this particular project. We're not here to talk about the rainfall that happened this weekend. We're not here to talk about hazard mitigation, our local businesses. We're not here to talk about the library. We're not here to talk about anything other than the project that is set forth before us today with the land acquisition with this company that's coming in. Have I got that? Okay. Now, with that being said, if you want to, if, if the four people, there's Newton, Andy, and John, and Danny, are y'all wanting to talk about the...
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Then first, I want to talk to y'all first, and then we'll take questions from the floor. Everybody understand what we're going to do? Okay. So, Andy, all, so you can stand up where you are, you can come up here, either way you want to do it.
Yeah.
We don't have, we weren't expecting you, so we don't have the microphone. Go ahead.
I have a question for each and every one, but I'll try to stay focused with this at hand. The, you mentioned that the property on the west end of town with this business acquisition, that's 84.5 acres?
Correct.
You're talking about the same property?
Yeah, I'm not sure the digits, that's it.
You mentioned that there's a housing development next to Bay Ridge Village.
You got it.
Housing development.
That's correct.
Talking about the same property that, why would you guys not try to convince this company to work with the OMC, like, property? Because it's already, like, industrial.
The, so is ours, it's industrial. The OMC property is private, it's not ours.
Yeah, but there's acquisitions that can be made. You could spend county money to Sam Young, who owns the OMC property.
Yeah, to your point, but that's, that's just not the way the process works. We certified this site to be able to draw in industry. Mr. Bill Slavel here that works with the county revenue and estate can verify, and to what I'm saying, if you don't have a certified industrial site, you're not going to draw business in to the community, even if a private citizen has property for sale. It just doesn't work that way. I mean, it, it, not to say that it doesn't happen, it's just very few and far between.
It's just like a thought, since that's already an industrialized site, it would really help, you know, Yancey County, like, looks for people driving in to see the industrial sites over there behind the pine trees versus right here amongst us.
Well, our focus is on the one that we own. And that's the one that they want. They chose it, we didn't. They chose it. All right, next is Newt Nixon. Stand there, you can come up here. Newt, either way you want to do it.
Come up, I'll get you a paper because you listen. I'm concerned with where we're going forward. Are we going to take this beautiful land and turn it to a factory with our tax-free incentives, giving away lands that is profitable? I just would like to understand, if we are moving towards half-built, quickly-built, volunteered homes, and factories moving in, are we moving into a mountain factory delve? Are we going to stay where we are with beautiful mountains? That's all I've got to say.
Okay. Thank you.
And transparency. We'd like, we all want some more transparency, Jeff.
Yes, yes.
What do you say?
Transparency.
Transparency.
Yeah, we'd like to see where we're going, like, just a little more, um...
That's what we're doing.
Where we're trying to get behind you guys, get with us, please.
That's what we're doing here today. As Donnie's already said, we're following the protocol that we have to do.
Fairly.
This is what we're going to do. And when the time comes, if we can make this all work, then that company will put a disclosure out to the public, let you know what's going on with them. But we're to this point.
My question to the Commissioner Lear was related to this, because I asked you at Rupture Rooster back in the summer.
Say, say again.
My, I had a question for each of the commissioners. My question to the leader was the same one I had at Rupture Rooster. I asked why eight years ago Little Leaf lettuce farms didn't come in?
Well, and I'm, and I'm not going to get too deep into that, but it does involve the OMC property, because it was a private individual.
And that's the transparency thing he's talking about. We want to know, we want to know what's going on.
Because it was a private, it was a private individual that, that held the strings to that.
You can say Sam Young, it's okay, just say it now.
We couldn't do anything about the property owner.
The building.
Andy, we could not do anything about the property owner, making an agreement with a private company or not. We, we had no control of that. This we do. This we do. John Hart, Hart.
I'm just wondering if the commission is in a position to actually make demands, not just suggestions, but demands upon any new businesses regarding environmental impact?
Yes.
I'm thinking, can you say to them, put solar on this building? It's south-facing.
Right.
It's perfectly appropriate, and it makes sense.
As I said a minute ago, I feel positive that everybody in this room will agree to the, to the environmental impact that they're going to have. And, and yes, we can make those demands, and we already have, and we've talked to them about it. So, I think you're going to be pleased. But we, but I can't indulge anymore in that right now.
Can I interject with aesthetics on that as well, like blueprints? What, what are we going to be looking at driving back into town now? Is this, I'm sure you've considered it, uh, is this, do you have any idea at this point yourself?
As far as what, buildings going to be?
Aesthetics, yes.
Yeah, all the aesthetics of it. And I don't know how much they're going to landscape as far as that, but I do know that they are going to have at least one pretty good-sized building.
One, one-story, two-stores, what will happen? Will you see the road?
Probably be two-story.
Okay. So, you will see it driving into town?
You, yes, you'll be able to see exactly the whole operation.
Okay.
At this particular aspect of the operation, yes. Yes.
When you say this particular aspect, would you define that?
The Yancey County aspect of this operation.
Okay, it reads kind of they get to do whatever they want to do, but what I was reading, you're giving them free rein to build, is that correct?
Well, we, we have already, and we're fixing to go in close session with them in a few minutes, and looked at more of their design. This is not a done deal. This is why we're going through this process.
That's why we're here as a community, right?
Exactly.
So we discuss it as a community.
Exactly. So you can ask those types of questions, and that, and we've already vetted to that point. We've already looked at some of their diagrams. We've already looked at what it's going to be. But I mean, if it's going to be a skyscraper or anything, it's not what we want. It's not what we want.
Yeah, what do we want? What do we want? That's the question.
We wanted Little Leaf lettuce. We wanted Little Leaf lettuce farms, eight years.
Yeah, so, so did we, Andy. So did we, and we fought very hard for it.
I don't, I don't know that that's transparent, Jeff. You guys didn't make that transparent, that you fought for Little Leaf lettuce industry. You didn't. That's why we're upset about it.
Yeah. Well, there again, we can't, we can't hold the hands of a private citizen that owns property. Danny McIntosh, you're next.
Yeah, I think I sort of reflect my sentiment, you for having to hold the public hearing with very little retail. I know that's the law, it's part of the process. But, and I think at this point in time, the public hearing, a lot of times, is that you say you're either for or against something. But what I would say is, I'm not, I actually have watched the operation over the past several years, and I have. And I think we're close to killing things. I don't know what's best for Yancey County, I don't even know the facts to it. But, based on what I've seen, from y'all in the past 10, 12, 15 years, whatever, I think it makes a good decision for we can, for our company, for the citizens. So I'm going to trust y'all to do that now. So I'll be in favor of it.
Thank you.
And Bill, I'm glad that if you're here, it's good to see you. I've known Bill a long time, and what he does is some good work. I feel like you have good support, and I've got to believe it's a good project.
Well, we've got the potential of a, of a minimum of $150 billion project coming in here, which is substantially bigger than what Little Leaf was. Little Leaf couldn't fit on that property. We wanted to. They couldn't fit on the one at the highway 80, because we wanted them to. So, the table turned, and we lost control of whether that stayed or not. But anyway, $150 million impact to our county, just in the investment, let alone the jobs that's going to produce. The environmental impact is minimal to none, so to speak, that kind of thing. I mean, they checked all the boxes, everything that we vetted for the last good while. They have checked all the boxes into something that would fit extremely well in the Yancey County. We're going through the next process with them here in just a few minutes. There will be another process like this, and of course, they can make the announcement about who they are, and what they are, and what they want to be doing, or we will, one or the other, as soon as January, according to what they say. But it's totally up to them. We still have this nondisclosure agreement with them, that we can't disclose but so much information until a certain amount of time. So when they are allowing us to indulge more of who they are and what they are, our hands are tied. We're going through this process right now to make sure that everybody understands what we are pursuing to do. We've not done it yet, of what we are pursuing to do. Does everybody understand? Derek?
Just being a resident of the town, I'm concerned about really what it is. I look at the board members up there, and except for the exception of, nobody lives in, the city limits. I want to know how, I don't think, I want to know what this business consists of. I mean, I really want to know.
Right, and when we come to that point, and we come to that...
You're saying that y'all don't know at all?
Oh, no, we know. We know, we just can't indulge it because we signed a disclosure. I mean, we can't...
How long is that good for?
Well, until they, until after we have our conversations, and they have told us, the conversation that we had with them, they've told us, that it could be, that it could be as soon as January.
Right. Are we going to know what the plan is?
Yes, yes, you're going to know.
Before it's finalized?
You're, you're going to know.
Before it's finalized?
Before it's finalized.
Once disclosed, it's, it's going to be hard, like, especially if you guys are making the decision, or are we making the decision as a community, or are elected officials to make it?
Do we get to say so?
No.
No, we're going to say it. You're getting a say-so right now.
You're going to like it.
I'm just asking you what it is, because it's your money.
But we don't understand, that's not the same thing. That's really not. You don't understand, you aren't telling us what it is.
Yeah, well, the only thing you've got to understand of this, we're bound by the whole county statutes, and we have to go by that. We can't just be a maverick out there and a cowboy, running roughshod, doing what we want to do as we want to do it. There's a process. We've got to go through that process, and we're going to go through that process. We signed a confidentiality, a process with this company that we can't disclose what it is yet. And until that company says, all right, we're good now, y'all can let the public know.
We're going to do it, you're going to slice it up. You're going to do it anyway.
No, we didn't say that. We're in the process of trying to make out a deal. We're trying. We're trying because this is a very good deal. I'm just saying. Yes, ma'am?
I would just like to ask, if it sounds like this is going to be something industrial, to ask the people who want to build this to consult with Maywood Dark Scott? To make sure that they're not adding total light pollution that has gone crazy in this town, it seems like?
I'm glad you wrote that down.
Yeah, that story.
I am glad you wrote that down. The, they are working hand-in-hand, and have been since they've been working on it, so we're trying. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Got it. Yeah. She means...
I know you can't tell us the name of the company. Can you tell us anything about what it is, and what will be the impact, or do you have a lot of, I'm concerned, like you said about the people who live closer, about trucks in and out, and all that?
Yeah. The, the only thing that we're able to give right now is Project Gator. Project Gator, that's what it's called. That's come with the Department of Revenue with this company, where they've got to go to name a project. And that's what this is. And that's all we can indulge at this particular, yes, sir? Go ahead, go, yes.
Will this, will this project have any effect on the county's property taxes, raising taxes due to bringing something in that's going to be a high-end factory?
No.
Will we have to absorb any of the tax on it?
Motion.
Can you hold...
As a matter of fact, if it does anything, it would be just the opposite.
Can you hold, hold the public hearing after and discuss?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that would make people feel better.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
So, this particular piece of property, when you guys had zoned the way that it's zoned to attract the, the type of manufacturer you want, what were you guys putting that out there? How were you advertising that? How were you letting people know that this opportunity existed? What, what type of businesses were you hoping to attract?
I'm glad you asked that. Hey, Bill? Could you, if you don't mind, sir, could you, this Bill Slavel is resident of Mitchell County, but he works for the Department of Revenue. If you don't care, could you explain an industrial site, and how this has impacted us, and, and where we would be if we didn't even have it? So if you could, please address the crowd. That, that question kind of pings towards you.
Yeah, I work for the economic...
Now, tell, tell who you are and what you do.
I, I live in Spree Fun. I work with the Economic Development Partnership, and part of the existing management team. So we received an inquiry two months ago from a local resource, and the company that's looking at, at the area, and keep in mind, this is a competitive project. They're looking at other areas. So, this is part of the process. But in the certified site process for the state of North Carolina, there are certain conditions that have to be met for us, for a piece of property to qualify for a certified site. And in the business that we are in, companies really look to the local government, or to the regional partnerships, or whoever they're dealing with, to have, do have a developed site ready to go. Not necessarily that it's been graded or anything like that, but have we done the environmental, face one environmentals, have we done the archaeological studies, have we done the name and species studies, things like that? There's, there's a whole myriad of, of things that have to be included for the state to certify. In this case, I believe the county used, used Sam for Holzhouser?
Yes.
As, as the consultant to do all of these things. And so those things have been completed, and once the North County Department of Commerce saw those results, then it met all the criteria, and then, kind of like an architect, an architect put this, their stamp on, on a building. So that's what the state of North Carolina has done, Department of Commerce, about this particular site, that it's met all these criterias, all these things have been done, that, that make it viable profit. And for us, that do economic development, it, it simply expedites a process, because what companies do not want to do is just come and look at a piece of all land that's not been vetted, so to speak. And so... vetted, so to speak. And so companies that come to North Carolina in many cases, look at how fast can they get up and operating? Is, is, is it, does it meet the needs of the community? Uh, does, does it fit with the community? And so that's the things commissioners have done, that we've worked in touch with them. And again, this is just step two of the twenty-step process, which did a long way down. And, and, but the company looked at this area because the owner of the company a vacationer. A vacationer. And he likes the people, he likes the community, and it's what he wants his company to play. And so very, very, um, environmentally friendly company. Very conscious of what they will do in the community in terms of reinvestment. Let alone, you know, the financial investments, the job investments. So they, uh, again, this is step two or three in the long run. And again, it gets, they're not only looking to get something, you know, the first basis.
See a question? Can I ask, what are the benchmarks are that we're looking at? Are we looking at Spruce Pines? Mines or Shelby perhaps? I mean, what, what are, what are the goals? What are the aesthetics? What is the benchmark on this in, in general, as far as environmental impact, personal impact? Are we gonna turn into a mining situation like we have at Spruce Pine? A factory situation like Shelby? Because those are very much in my brain.
It's nothing like that, no. It's nothing.
Well, I, 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 it's all gray. It's very difficult for you guys. Again, my concern is on this point, but a little bit separate. I'm, are we staying where we were going prior? As a touristic town and moving forward? Or are we offering open grants and free land to bring in industry and factory? It's a simple, like, I would personally like to know that if I wanna build something, I'm gonna build it to a guy who moved into a factory? Or are we gonna keep it clean and green?
Keep it clean and green.
Thank you.
Very soon.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, criteria that you're talking about, that criteria that's, that the town has set up, or that criteria that's the company set up?
No, that's a criteria that's been established by the North Carolina-
Okay. Is that a public document?
Sure.
Absolutely. So we can find out what you consider-
You can see the findings. I think the Sanford-Holzhouser reports, public information, you can see that. That was fine.
And there again, Matt, it's standard operating procedure that has to be done.
So let me remind you, one, one thing of the land, uh, we received that we're in by, we didn't pay any of their taxes directly. We got our COVID dollars and we bought Michael. We got our ARPA dollars and we bought these two parcels on each end of town. One being the Orde Brown, which is the southwest, west Burnsville Church. Uh, and one being down here where we're building the new sheriff's department and dispatch center, which is the Tommy Buchanan property there, or not Tommy Buchanan property, but behind Tommy Buchanan.
The Young property?
Yes. Joe Young. That's right. So we had a one-time funding string coming down. Uh, it wasn't nothing that we could build a building and maintain it, or we could pay our employees more and maintain that. Every time something happened that we could give them a, a premium pay. That, that's not the way it was. It was a one-time payout and we needed a one-time expense. And so we invested it in land. And, but we ground property that we made that investment, when we got Tom, uh, the Sanford and Holzhouser to come in and do their study on it, we were one of five parcels. We had some in Mitchell County, we had some here. They narrowed it down to what was the best. And when they narrowed it down to which one was the best, then we moved forward. Um, did a lot of digging and stuff before the commissioners made that decision to buy that property. And then also, that was the best in two counties for industrial site that we could lay our hands on. We invited Mitchell County to, um, so the deal was, we were looking at crossing lines and helping each other and doing an industrial site together in Jordan. That's right. And, um, they were a little bit, when it turned out to be Yance County, they were a little bit hesitant about spending money in Yance County, because it was Mitchell County money. And, um, so anyway, we, the commissioners decided to move forward by ourselves. It panned out to be a really good industrial site. And so that money was a grant that we received to do the Sanford-Holzhouser study of thirty thousand dollars. So far as our money out of our tax base, um, as far as financially goes, not environmentally or anything like that, but fi- financially, um, it was at no cost to the, to the taxpayers here. So it wasn't out of our coffers.
That's the Orde Brown property as well as the Young property? Has nothing to do with our coffers?
Well, Michael didn't either. Michael didn't either. You know, we, we tried with Little Leaf, going back to Little Leaf. We tried on the Orde Brown property, because we don't have to deal with anybody else. We deal with ourselves. Then we tried at Michael, and the deal at Michael was, and I know we're getting off the kilter a little bit, it was when-
Kind of related, no, it's not.
When Orde Core came in, they were so far behind in their studies and stuff, it took them over a year to do their mitigation, what it would cost them to mitigate it. So it was five million dollars to mitigate it. Meaning, if you're gonna cover that little string, that's a wet weather string in the, in, in wet weather, then, um, it was gonna cost like five point five million dollars. So then they went back to O M C and they couldn't work out a deal. They just couldn't get a deal worked out. It was nothing that the county did. We put guns of laser, we put everything we had out there to try to help. Um, just didn't work out. The company said, sorry, not coming. So this, so none of those parcels did we have our, sorry about that, did we have county dollars tied up in it? And we still, it's really good parcels for investment, uh, Michael for housing or something like that, green space, something, you know, it's still very, very, uh, beneficial to our community. And we're very, very concerned over what goes in those parcels. I heard Dollar General mentioned here. I can safely say that it's not Dollar General. Um, I can say that. Um, so hopefully that, that puts that to, to rest. But we do, the commissioners are very savvy on what fits good in our community, what's good steward of the land, um, and what's minimal impact but best benefit to our citizens. That, that all goes into it.
And there again, about the Dollar General, that type thing, that's a private company dealing with private citizens. They don't ask for incentives, so we have no control over Dollar General anyway. Now, they don't come to the commissioners and ask for anything. Yes, sir.
The comment I've made, the Dollar General words came out of my mouth, but what I was speaking to at the moment was the brown-clad aluminum siding tights building that Dollar General likes to put up everywhere. And he, someone mentioned the aesthetics of this new facility. And I said, we don't want another Dollar General looking store plant. You know, it needs to blend.
Right. Right. And I, and I can, I think I can speak freely about this company and, and what we have vetted them and the times, the conversations that we've had and meetings we've had with them. I think they're willing to do whatever, whatever they would need to do to fit a look, if, if that's, if that's a huge concern. I feel like, and I'm not speaking for them, I'm just saying, I feel like that they would be willing to do, uh, go, go the extra mile to, to accommodate for, for a state-
Something you guys want as well?
Yes. Of, of course, of course. I mean, we're with you.
Yancey County is a part of the overall operation of this company.
Yes.
Whatever they're producing, is it culminate and, and is it delivered out of, of Burnsville as a finished product? Can you tell us that? Uh, or is it a component that goes somewhere else?
Can I go that far? We're, we're gonna, we're gonna hold on that question for now.
Okay.
For now. We're gonna hold on that question. That, that's, that's a tricky question. We don't want to indulge too much.
Are, are you guys at liberty to say at this point, I mean, there's speculation of one of two things for most people in this room. Has this company approached any other counties in western North Carolina and been adamantly denied by the community that you're aware of?
Not that we're aware of.
That would be the asphalt shingle company.
I mean, Bill's the one who's been holding her hand from the process, but I would say no. 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 Yes, ma'am.
Lynn, you spoke about the, the number of jobs that the company would be producing. Could you tell me the breakdown between construction jobs and permanent jobs? Because the construction jobs go away after they get building. But the permanent employment job?
A hundred, that's not construction jobs. That's all permanent employment jobs. And, um, that's the base, uh, I'll say this, let me just say this. When Altech came in, they said a hundred jobs, I believe, Bill. And look what it's turned into. They don't have to say, we're gonna do this and this, we're gonna do the future. They grow, as they grow. Um, but they said a hundred and fifty jobs. Now, that's not construction. That's not getting them graded out. That's not putting silver lines in. That's, that's just jobs dealing with their business. A hundred and fifty permanent jobs. Um, and so they may have a few more than that. But they at least have to say a hundred and fifty and that's all we know of.
And we have, we have to make sure that they are part of the, part of the agreement that we make with this company is make sure that they come to that, you know, if they promised in the investment, a hundred and fifty million and a hundred and fifty jobs, then they have to, they have to, uh, they have to meet that before everything will mesh. Does that make sense to you? That, that's part of, that's part of the incentive, yes, ma'am. In the back, and then I'll get you next.
Can y'all encourage them to use local grading companies and plumbers and instructions?
Of, of course.
Just the best deal they get from wherever they're from.
Of, of course. Of course.
Speaking on that with Altech, and so like, with, after Ghaleen, you know, we're like at a loss for actual land and housing and stuff. So what actually helps the county more? A strip of land that's eighty-four acres, can you put a factory on with a hundred and fifty jobs? That's good. I'm all for creating jobs. You know this. What helps the county more? That or a housing development that people that actually live in Yancey County? See, Altech is good. It's for, it's good for Yancey County. There's a lot of people that don't live in Yancey County.
You're right. Let me, let me ask you this, Andy. What, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? So if you're gonna, if you're gonna have a housing development here, how are they gonna afford those houses? How are they gonna be able to maintain those houses? They gotta have a job. Uh, you put a job in and they have jobs, then, then they can build a house. Uh, yes, ma'am, right here. And I'll get you next.
You could speak to the, the overview of public input into the process, like the whole, how many times will the public have input into this?
Well, we will have, we'll probably have, I don't know that we'll have many more, but I'm sure we'll probably have one more at least. Um, and, and that's it. Well, here's the process. And I know that y'all are not gonna like what I'm gonna say, but here's the process. In November, there's an election. And you have elected, whether you voted or not, for us, that's totally up to you. But the county has voted these five people in to make those decisions. And we have to go through the process of doing those things. And we're trying our best to make those decisions best we can. And we're looking out for the good, the well-being and the welfare of Yancey County. That's our primary job. And that's what we're doing. We're having these meetings, so y'all can be involved and involved. Not just because that it's general statute that we do it, but because this is who we are for Yancey County, and we wanna make the best decisions for that. Now, is it gonna make everybody happy?
It's possible.
Probably not. Right, Andy?
But you understand-
It's a sound, it's gonna make everybody happy.
But, but we're gonna do the best we can in making the right decision for everybody. We can't sue anybody. I wish we could. There's a little magic wand that will do that. But yes, we're looking out for the welfare of Yancey County.
But the difficulty of holding, I mean, I understand to your point, the difficulty from y'all's perspective of trying to do this without being able to disclose anything.
Right. And our hands are tied to a point, yes.
And from our perspective,
And I understand the frustration.
How to be dressed into this without having any kind of detail? And so when you're able to disclose information and tell us, is it already a foregone conclusion?
There's, no, no, if, if that's what we want, we haven't signed a contract or anything at that point. But the full disclosure will be given when this company's ready to make that full disclosure and we can let you know more.
And, and honestly, the secrecy is, I think, part of the concern.
I'm sure. I'm positive. I'm positive that is true. And, and we've talked about that and we understand that. But when you sign those, uh, non-disclosure statements, you have to abide by, because here's the thing. It has happened before and they will testify to this fact. If this gets out, all that company's gotta do is walk away. And they will. They will. They want to make sure that they, uh, because of the very competitive nature of what they're doing, they want to make sure that they have something finalized before it gets out and somebody else comes in, that kind of thing. And it's, it's, anyway, hold on. Yes, sir.
So just to clarify, I know this has been said like five times, but, so non-disclosure right now, once they disclose, then you all have at least one more public hearing, like once it's known what's coming in?
Yeah, and it'll probably be, it'll prob- probably be a regular commission meeting.
Okay.
This, this, this particular meeting here for this particular day and time was done based on a timeline that this company gave us because they had to get it done before January first. So that's why this particular meeting is here. But we would, yes, ma'am, right here, in the back. Hold on. You're next, you're next.
So you, you'll have the meeting before you sign in my graph?
Well, and I don't know that there'll be a contract signed, but we'll have an agreement with this company. But yes, we'll have another public hearing. And hopefully, maybe, maybe, maybe it can be our January, the second Monday in January. We'll see. We'll see.
Guys, listen, this is a hundred and fifty million, a hundred and seventy-five million dollars worth of investment. We don't see this come through Yancey County.
Ever. Ever.
This is our lives.
Non-disclosure agreement, I think, in Buncombe County one time, the commissioners had a meeting and they disclosed the name of the company. Some people in the room was from that company. They got up, they walked out and took their investment with them. Never to be seen again. Didn't have to have any more further discussion. So fraud and wanting the commissioners to tell you more and tell you more and tell you more could jeopardize a future project. That might be their fraud. You know, and we realize everybody wants to know and we would love to tell you.
I promise you, we'd like to tell you.
You would like it. But that's gonna bring up more questions and we're gonna have more and more as we go along. You've elected these guys and gals to, to be the best interest of the county. And they're gonna make the best choices. If we had eighteen thou-, that's when you get to make your choice. When we have eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand people, we're never gonna squeeze them off. We could sit here and talk about it all day and more people come in, be here tomorrow, and more people come in, let's be here the next day. I, I mean, we could keep on. And until this can come out, we can't tell it. So I know you want more and more, but please hang with us. This, this-
Give us some time for the next process.
Yes.
When we, we come to round two. Yes, ma'am, go right ahead, right here.
What's the minimum salary at these positions?
About forty-two thousand and some change.
So if that's from their choice, or are we pushing from what they're supposed to living?
That's that company. That's, we have nothing to do with salaries.
You can't. You can't.
But their starting, their starting pay is forty-two thousand is what-
From what kind of position do they say?
Their starting pay is forty-two thousand. I can't get that wrong. I can't. And it goes all the way up into six figures. Hold on, Matt.
I think it's frustrating people.
Wait, wait just a second. She was next, but hold on, Matt. Hold up, hold up, hold up. Go ahead.
My question was, if we all want what is best for Yancey County, y'all included, we hope that whatever this is, is that answered. But will we know if you come out, you have this meeting, you're able to give us details? And the overwhelming majority of Yancey County does not want this, is that enough for it to stop at that point? Or will it continue no matter what?
Sure. But I don't know whether we'd ever get to that census, but yes, we, I promise you.
That's the part that everyone's concerned with.
We, we've still, we've still got lots, lots more to do in the process. Our next process starts here in a few minutes. We have a close session and we meet with those folks. Uh, and we get to go a little further in the process. But we're not there yet. We're not there. So just, please, please be patient with us. We're, we're still working on this, Matt.
I understand your situation. What's frustrating for us is we're gonna make a deal with these people. Hopefully we go-
We, I, I hope, I hope it is.
Not unless it's finished, we'll come to an agreement. We'll have one more time to talk about it. It sounds like it's just gonna be a time for us to express our displeasure in it. But it's not gonna have any impact on this-
But see, there, you're looking at it with the glass half empty, Matt. What if it's a time when you can, when you can express your pleasure in it? I mean, that's a two-way street, pal. I mean, I remember what you were saying.
I'm not saying that that would necessarily be the reaction.
I know, but give us a chance.
It's, it's kind of like if, if you were roommates in a house and the person says, you know, we're bringing in a new roommate, can't tell you anything about him. He's paying twice as much as you guys are, and so just be happy with it. And somebody we've known nothing about is now living in our house.
Yeah.
There's more than just money.
Unfortunately, that's the way that it works to this point, to this point. We're gonna get that. We're gonna get that.
Okay.
And I understand the frustration. Yes, sir.
I'm not trying to cry and open up and figure out who this company is. I know it's not gonna work, but I am curious about the, like, workforce housing as it related to Altech. I know that they even had more jobs from what I'd heard, that they could have grown online or can ring online. Are these companies also interested in other investments that the county may be making related to bringing in solutions for, let's say, more shelter in the area?
Can I say yes to that without disclosing? Yes.
Yes. Okay.
And we've already had that conversation.
Okay.
And, and see, the, the point in this, the point in this, hopefully, we've vetted, we've done some things. Hopefully, y'all can give us some more information when we go to this company that we can talk. So, everything that's, so far, everything that's been brought up, we've addressed these, these circumstances, situations. We've had these questions. We've met with them on site. We've talked to them about these particular things. Some of those, uh, issues, uh, we've already addressed.
How long has this been in the works?
Months. Months. How long have they been in the works? A lot longer. But how long as far as them vetting Yancey County? But as far as us vetting them and working with them, months.
Yeah, it's on the same, same thing. First, I'll say, we have to trust in these guys, like it or not, they represent us now. The other part of that is, you gotta live with us, too. So I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's bottom line.
You've been doing it for 61 years.
And you do, yes, sir. I mean, you do the wrong thing, you gotta face it in the street and everybody else.
And that's a two-way street.
Exactly.
Exactly.
I mean, we have to trust in you. On that, that wasn't personal, I'm just saying, you have to face it.
You and I have our past, but that, that's, that's it. That's it. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah. On bringing this company in, it's obvious, there's more possibilities for investment, housing, et cetera, and so on. Well, you have numbers of people that they're bringing in, income that they're bringing in. This will directly, let's say, I don't know, I wanna build a spec house. This will enable us people who are starting to hurt to look future forward, to work with this company that's coming in. We know how many people they'll be, Samaritan's first, for instance, we know nothing, some